Dealing with technical difficulties, Blair's channeling his inner IT department.
This is not duck color.
You have.
It's homecoming, Sweet Home Husky.
Sweet Home Husky.
Yes.
It's Steve. Hello, how are you? I'm good. I'm actually on an online meeting.
We'll have to mute her.
Oh, I just wanted to know which line we were planning to be in that.
Um, where are we?
There we go.
Uh oh.
She can unmute herself, is that correct?
She should be able to, but I'll unmute her when I see her back.
Okay. Well, should we go ahead and start?
We are recording, so go ahead.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open the planning commission meeting for October 7th, 2021 at 6:33. And we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. All right, I guess we'll, uh, still doing a roll call for attendance.
Yeah. Eva, I muted you and now I can't seem to unmute you.
Good, let's talk about it first before.
So I think you have to unmute yourself.
Oh, there we go, yeah.
All right, uh, roll call then. Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner Melzer.
Here.
Commissioner Woltius.
Here.
Commissioner Lowman.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens is absent and Commissioner Corn is absent.
All right, so, uh, I guess we'll just jump into, uh, well, if there's anybody with anything that's not on the agenda tonight, this would be the time to say it. We have no one in the building.
No one online.
We don't have anybody online.
Don't believe we have anybody online.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we will go ahead and jump into our first application tonight, which is.
We have a couple of minutes.
Oh, we have a couple of minutes? Oh, to go over, yes.
From September 2nd and September 16th.
Yes, does anybody have anything in regards to the minutes to, uh? Look, I did not get copies of the minutes in my email, so.
Well, I would make a motion, but I wasn't here on the second, so somebody else ought to make that motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from
September 2nd.
September 16th. Is that what it was?
Uh, I believe the second and the 16th.
I would second that.
Maybe we have a motion and a second. We'll go to Blair for a roll call vote.
All right, Commissioner Journey.
So, yes, on the one for the for the second, but I didn't attend the one on the 16th.
Okay.
Commissioner Melzer.
Yes.
Commissioner Woltius.
Uh, similarly, I was absent on the September 2nd meeting, but I approve him on the 16th.
Okay. Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
Commissioner Lowman.
Yes.
So, uh, Commissioner Journey, was it the second that you weren't there for or the 16th?
I was absent on the 16th.
And Commissioner Woltius?
I was absent on the second.
On the second, so you've flipped, so, okay, ultimately, we have a
quorum vote on each.
We had a majority for each one of those.
Yep.
Good.
All right. So now moving on to our application.
Okay.
So this is application, oh, it just went away on my thing. CU 21-11 will open the public hearing at 6:37. Um, I'm gonna read it off my phone because I don't have it in front of me. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for access easement for the proposed parcel three of pending partition P 21-14. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code 16.12.030F, access easements where no other practical access to lots or parcels exist, the city may allow an access easement for actual access to the lots or parcels. Approval of the easement that is joint-use driveway may be approved pursuant to the standards listed in 17.08.100C6. The subject property is in the industrial M-zone. Conditional use application CU 21-11 is pending the approval of partition application P 21-14. Application P 21-14 is being filed simultaneously with application CU 21-11. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So, um, directed at our commissioners, does anyone have any personal bias in regards to this application?
No.
No.
Okay, any conflicts of interest?
Nope.
No.
None for myself. Uh, any ex parte information?
No.
No.
Just looked at it today.
Just driving by, okay, and myself, no. So at this time, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Blair for our staff report.
Okay. You have the full staff report in your binders. Essentially, I don't want to read through the entire thing unless you have questions on it, but essentially, this property is in the industrial zone. It, um, it borders properties that are in the recreation, commercial, and highway commercial zone. Recreation or commercial, highway commercial to the south and industrial to the east. And then to the west and the north are the recreation, commercial zones. A little background on this one, uh, this is on 24th Avenue with the Public Works Yard. This is something that's been in the works for the past couple of years. 24th Avenue has been identified as a preferred route into the county's mill property and into the city's property beyond. And so the intention is to eventually have this road be sufficiently wide to bring people into the jamboree at the new home on the city's property at the former Night River Quarry. And so to do that, the road width would have to increase significantly. Right now, it's just a two-lane road there, I believe a 40-foot right-of-way. Um, and so it's rather small. We have, uh, to widen the road, what we've arrived at is making a deal with the property owner on the corner, which is H&amp;H Machine. Uh, and it's owned by a pair of brothers and they also own Reliable Welding as well, um, which is next door to it. And the plan, the deal that was approved by the city council is essentially a land swap between them and the city. And so Reliable Welding, uh, H&amp;H Machine would give up 20 feet of their frontage on 24th Avenue. And in exchange, they would get the southern 60 feet of the, um, the city's Public Works Yard. The reason this is before you is that they specifically insisted that it not be a property line adjustment, which we could have just done administratively, but they wanted a separate parcel for their own, um, tax purposes and getting all the financing to work out for them. The problem with that is that, um, the strip that they are getting under our code is too long and thin to be allowed. Uh, and so the only way to give them that portion is to split it into two and give them two parcels, which then necessitates an access easement through one of them into the other.
Okay.
So it is unfortunately rather convoluted, but it is what we were able to arrive at. It's one of those things where it's going to be a moot point eventually anyway, because their plan is to retire and sell all their property to someone in the future. Whatever redevelopment happens on that corner is basically going to erase all of this and probably combine it all into one and redevelop, especially if development happens the way we want it to on 24th. So, um, that's the short of it is of why it's here and what we need your approval for, if you agree, is essentially to allow that, that access easement through, so that it can be two parcels and not just, not just one, which we are not allowed to do. Um, on a side note, um, one of the critical components of this plan for this widening and for the access that we want it to be is a rail crossing to bring this street further north. We just got word the other day that that rail crossing has been approved by ODOT.
Oh.
And so, uh, it's essentially, we've got five years to get it built. If we don't get it built within that five years, then we have to extend with ODOT and go through a process of trying to extend it. But, um, for the next five years, we have pretty much set that this is how it's going to be. It's just a question of getting it actually built. The plan is set and ODOT is approved, so is the railroad. So we're in good shape when it comes to that. But this is kind of the initial, uh, the initial step toward widening the road. So, um, and then I can take any questions you may have.
I have some kind of somewhat unrelated to this, but with the allowing of this addition to widen the street, is ODOT given any information as far as it being a signaled interchange?
Um, the ODOT, they've approved the rail crossing. It's a different division for the signalization of the road. So, uh, we have a different group of people to work with there. That is essentially dependent on development. So once there is sufficient development to require a, uh, a signalized interchange, then that's when it'll be built.
Laura, I don't know the area of that way too much, but is there any other neighbors around there that might object that they would be able to use that property?
There's a couple of commercial properties, um, on the end into the south. There's some county property to the, to the west. It's, I really don't, uh, I can't see that it would be that much of an issue. I mean, the only one that I can think of, uh, on the, on the maps, you can see that Reliable Welding is on the very corner. Next to that is H&amp;H Machine. Those are separate properties, but they're owned by the same people. Beyond that, there's a property owned by Cambia and Greg Ota. And they've been notified of this because they live nearby, but we haven't heard anything from them. And so the only thought that occurs to me is that they might not, this would change the ownership of the property immediately to the north of them. And so they might object to their neighbor having the property to the east and the north. But I really can't see how that's a.
They're building in properties for sale.
What's that?
It's for sale.
Right, so, uh, you know, frankly, I don't know why they would be having a problem with it. And any buyer of their property, um, I would suggest would, you know,
Look to purchase.
Be aware of what's going on because, uh, H&amp;H Machine or Reliable Welding eventually want to sell. Someone could get that property and get all of the whole corner, uh, which is a relatively lucrative position to be in, especially with the development that we're having come through there.
Yep.
And so I can't really think of anybody being opposed necessarily. There certainly are opportunities for those who are paying attention.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Well, we don't have any applicants in the room to give any testimony, but.
I guess you would, since it's a city deal with the, the, uh, owners of H&amp;H Machine or Reliable Welding, it's kind of the city.
Right.
I guess that's, as much as I'm able to be a proponent, that's kind of what this is a deal. It's been in the works for a couple of years and I would, in my economic development hat, I would encourage it and speak to in favor of it. Uh, but we don't have anybody else now.
Okay. So, uh, we have no one in the room as far as proponent testimony or opponent testimony or online. So with that, I will assume there is also no neutral testimony. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:48 for discussion amongst the council or the commission. So, speaking as a member of the public, I, uh, am anxious for this. I know that it has been in the works for a long time. And for me, it seems like the initial piece of the puzzle
To make every.
That's gonna make, allow everything beyond it to happen. I mean, the rail is nice, but if we can't make the road big enough to get to the rail crossing, I think we're just lucky that, that, um, Dan and his brother are willing to do this. I know that they're getting ready to retire. So, which will be a sad thing for Sweet Home, but.
It'll probably make the commercial corner more valuable in time.
Yeah.
I would say so.
With the widening of the road and the anticipated use.
And the extra traffic and.
Traffic, yep. Yep.
And I know that the city's having to give up more property than they're getting, I believe.
Technically, yeah.
In order to make it feasible for them.
It's a question of how you value that land.
Yeah.
Right.
The land, it's land that is back behind, that's off-street.
Right, and it's a topographical change as well, I believe. From Reliable Welding, it drops like three or four feet.
Yeah.
Right there.
There's a little bit of a slope there, yeah.
So, larger but not necessarily more valuable.
Yeah.
But if both parties are happy, then I'm all for it. So.
I agree.
I would have preferred a property line adjustment.
Because it would have been done and gone.
Because we would have been done with it already. In fact, my staff kind of laughs every time I would come out with something to say about the other side, you know? Let's just get this over with.
But this works for now.
But it gets it done and.
Yeah.
Yep, any movement forward is good movement at this point.
Yeah. And I should, I should note that it really, there's no hard feelings on my part. It was mainly just trying to get over the hurdles to get the job.
Right.
Yeah.
Whatever's the quickest way to get there. Ava, do you have any questions or comments in regards to it?
No questions, no comments. Looks good.
All right, so if we don't have any questions for staff or comments in regards to it, we'll just look for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the application CU 21-11, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, setting the 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing the decision and direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we'll turn it over to Blair for a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Journey.
Aye.
Commissioner Melzer.
Yes.
Commissioner Woltius.
Yes.
Commissioner Parker.
Yes.
Commissioner Lowman.
Yes.
All right, so is unanimous, motion passes? So it's.
Five ayes and two absents.
Correct, yes. So at this point, um, that kind of concludes the portion of our public hearing. So at this point, we can move on to our lovely bit of light reading, unless there's other things that staff want to talk about prior to doing this?
Well, I mentioned the rail crossing getting approved. That's exciting and I'm glad that we're getting, moving forward on that. Again, these things have been in the works ever since I arrived at this job, so it's nice to see some progress being made. Um, and, you know, hopefully by the time, you know, really the next hurdle is getting things figured out on the county's property and, uh, and we're slowly getting things moving there, I think, but.
Are you able to give a brief report on that meeting that was held in here a couple days ago?
There was a meeting that mayor invited a bunch of different folks to talk about the mill property and what their interests might be and what, kind of give an update on what the city is doing and what the city would like to see. Essentially, the idea is that, if you don't know already, the county put out an RFP, a request for proposals for interested parties to buy that property. They weren't enthused about the proposals that they received and they ended up rejecting all four proposals. And so this meeting was kind of a attempt to kind of get people together and say, "Look, is there any interest from other parties?" Some of the people that were present were people who had made proposals. And so the idea is, well, maybe we can get a combined proposal together that the city can kind of facilitate and get that moving on so that, um, maybe what, maybe that could be successful in the situation to say, "Okay, what part of the mill property would you most like to have? What are you willing to pay for it? Can we put a combined, uh, proposal before the county commissioners?"
Is this the property that has the asbestos?
Yes, asbestos.
Yeah, on the roof, yeah. So I think basically at this point, the city's hoping to get kind of a proposal from all the interested parties to be able to present it to the county. At that point, the county would give it to the city and then the city would take care of it with the property investors possibly.
That's one way of, uh, that it could happen. The county was looking for a way to give the property to the city. Legally, I think we have to buy it. The other problem, and that's just, that's just the legal part of cities getting property. Because if the county gives it to us for no cost, then it's the same way we got the Night River Quarry property.
Right.
And it means it has to be for public use, which we don't want this to be for public use. So, um, it, that's trying to get the lawyers to figure out how we can get it from them. The other problem, of course, being is the current environmental state of the property. And so it, uh, the way it is now, um, we, my opinion is we need the county to finish up a few things and get DEQ to issue all of their documentation so that a buyer knows exactly what they're getting, knows exactly what they would have to do. There's some outstanding questions about who, some areas that aren't covered by the work that the county and warehouse are doing and we need to make sure that those areas are all have the right documentation and reports and studies. Uh, and then of course, there's, the asbestos issue is not something that is really determined at this point. Uh, I know that the county has basically been saying that they were hopeful that part of the cost of the sale of that portion of the property would, you know, they basically give that away to whoever's willing to clean up the asbestos. And I'm sure they would still be willing to do that. The problem is, is it's unclear as to how much that would cost. DEQ seems to think that that would be a $450,000 job. But that's one person's ballpark opinion, estimate, uh, one person at DEQ. So it hasn't really had a specialist look at really what would be necessary and how much it would cost. So those are all kind of, uh, you know, a lot of different factors that make the whole thing kind of in flux right now. So a couple of things that we're working on is that, like I said, that trying to get a joint proposal together. The other thing is, is that there's likely to be a joint workshop between the city council and the county commissioners to try to get all of them in the room at the same time. And we think that we're close to having something like that scheduled and allow us basically to, because part of the problem here is that the county commissioners each have different views on the property, but we can only get those out if we have a public meeting because they're only allowed to gather at a public meeting. Same thing with our city council. And so we do need to just basically get them at a meeting and get a notice as a public meeting and just hash it out, have everybody actually say what they want done with the property so that we can hopefully find a way that, to move forward that everybody can agree with. So it's, uh, it's moving forward, it's just moving forward as snails pace.
Yeah.
Other news, uh, I found out recently that we did get grant funding from the state for a housing needs analysis, which we have applied for in the past. It's just another component of our, uh, should be a component of our comprehensive plan. And, uh, there is another grant program where I'll be applying for some funding for a comprehensive plan update. So, um, that's all. If we can get all those documents in order and updated, it'll put us in a better position for, uh, for moving forward. We also, a year ago, found out that we were getting a grant from ODOT for an update to our transportation system plan. And we are finally getting to the point where, uh, they're close to selecting a consultant to do that work. So ODOT's really taken a very long time on that. But it's moving forward and we'll keep on keeping on.
So for future reference, mainly I guess just for myself and clarification, when we deal with ODOT as a city, do we deal with one person that's assigned to, say, our region that does like Sweet Home in Lebanon and all that? Or is it one person, like for the whole state, that deals with just one issue? And then somebody else deals with another issue?
Several different departments within ODOT.
Yeah, it depends on the job. Like, for example, there's, for the transportation system plan, there's one person who's assigned to that as their project and they have other projects in other parts of the state. For, uh, the sidewalk project that we have going on that is taking a long time, that's a different person, a different group. And depending on whether it's a plan or whether it's, you know, what stage in the improvement that is, you know, you could have different people at different stages of it. So it's, it's, there is a, there is like a local regional office that we talk to about initial things. But then once a project gets moving or gets going, it's usually, there's different contact people for each one of those.
Any other questions about current dealings? All right.
If there's more questions, there's less time for code reading.
Oh, let me think of something.
Just saying. All right, I guess we'll turn it over to robo-reader.
All right. We are on 17.60. Plan development.
Tab 28, second 28.
Start the machine. This is, uh, tab 28, the first tab 28.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions on that section?
Um, I had a question on G, housing types.
Yeah, I did too.
So the, it went from 10% to 30 to 30. Did it go from 10 to 20 to 30?
Well, what I thought was strange is that the, the R3 zone is essentially a high density housing zone. So
All right.
All right. I wonder where they got all this wordage from?
I'm wondering. Made it up?
I think just pulled it up.
Mm-hmm.
So I only have one question. Section G under fencing where it says six-foot-high fence. Our city code is seven feet.
So city code means you can go up to seven feet. You can put up a shorter fence if you want. This is saying that you have to do a six-foot high.
Wouldn't it be labeled as a minimum six-foot high, maximum seven-foot high? Or just label it as a... I mean...
It's certainly... However, you'd like.
I would just hate them to say, "Oh, I've got to do a six-foot, but people want a taller one." If the property's on a hill and the seven-foot would benefit privacy a little more.
Yeah, so this is not... Yeah, so just to be clear, this is not within the development. This is around the edge of the development that's bordering on a single-family neighborhood. So you could say minimum six feet. You could specify seven feet, which is the maximum allowed.
Planned development could even have taller than that, right?
Um.
I don't... On their property they can, but not on the edge of it.
Yeah. I don't recall under planned development if you can get around... I mean, within it, yeah, it's a question of the border as opposed to the interior. So really, I think it's certainly... This is something that can be adjusted and is up for whatever you would like.
I think it should be...
To screen, to be good neighbors to the...
Right.
The adjacent single-family homes.
I feel it should say something about or allowable height per city code or some... I don't know what kind of verbiage I would attach to it, but...
Um, would you want to say a... A side obscuring fence shall be placed along the property line that is the maximum allowed height in residential zones?
Yeah, with the six-foot minimum height up to allowable maximum.
Six foot up to allowable maximum.
Yeah.
We can find a way to work that?
I'm just excited that we're looking at this because I've seen this done so well in so many places that it's... This is like the happy medium between the planned development and a regular subdivision. And when this is done right, it can look amazing. This is actually what I was wanting to do on the property next door to the cities, to City Hall.
If you recall that... If you recall that property that we looked at before that was...
Behind the gas station.
Yeah, that had a bunch of smaller lots.
Mm-hmm.
It was essentially like deconstructing an apartment building was kind of the idea, that kind of density, that with the limitations of that particular lot, because they had a bunch of wetland area and that they had to be back away from Ames Creek and stuff like that. This... That property would have been ideal for something like this.
Yeah.
Because it has the open space. It has the feel of it. It's supposed to be more of a intimate neighborhood kind of thing that's all built together.
So I know that this is going to be required of any city greater in population than 10,000, but we're looking at it a little sooner. In regards to that, have we heard anything on our population from the census?
Yes, our census number is 98.28.
Oh, man.
Which, no, it's not a bad thing.
No, I know, I know.
We know we're going to get to that 10,000.
And I'm glad that people are willing to look at adopting this now because I think this...
And one thing to keep in mind, we're awfully close to the 10,000 mark where we have to make some of these rules. You can go ahead and implement anything that we have to do later. You could choose to implement it now. My only request is that we have provisions in place that are... For anything that is going to be required of us after 10,000 population, that we have some automatic triggers so we don't have to...
Redo everything.
Redo everything.
Yeah.
Like the duplexes on any lot, not just the corner.
But one thing to keep in mind, that count that got us to 98.28, that was done prior to those apartments on Long Street being finished.
Oh.
And so that's 48 units right there that's not included in that count.
And we've got a bunch, yeah.
Um, you assume two people per unit in that and that brings us awfully close.
Yeah.
So I don't think that we're going to... It's only going to be a year, a two at the maximum before we get to that 10,000 mark.
And if anyone wants a reference as far as how this goes, look up Celebration, Florida, the town. It started out as this originally plotted and then it grew into an actual city, but based on this and...
That's the one that Disney built it.
It's a party town.
Yeah. Well, the whole thing was built for Disney execs in the beginning and then it swelled. But the idea of the off-street parking, the screened garages, the common spaces, the different buildings, but still small and everything requiring a porch.
I'd wager that one, though, doesn't limit the size to 1,000 square.
Not anymore. The original phase did, but kind of the more central area around the post office. But then it did swell and became an actual town instead.
Right, right. There's some... When they're done well, some of these are really, really awesome.
Yeah.
And just look like a really great community.
Yeah.
So the mix of materials, textures, colors, how much of a mix do we want to give them?
I think it's kind of... It's thinking of like it's on the...
040 building requirements number three.
I think the intent is that you just want to make sure that this is not all exact same colors so that it's one big board.
And that they're not all, you know, eight-inch tongue and groove or T-111 or something boring.
Well, I mean...
It has to have multiple versions.
Yeah, you'd want to have at least a couple configurations to choose from, preferably three or four.
Yeah, it's not...
That's the question is how many options do you want to give people?
Yeah, I know it's not spelled out there, but it does kind of reference Northwest Cottage Design, which typically has either a little bit of stone veneer as a wainscoting, some lap siding and some board and bat, you know, a simple mixture in those sightings. So it's not like a giant monolithic wall of lap siding.
Do we know if the city of Nahalum has one of these in place now?
I don't know, actually.
I don't know.
If they've done something since... I mean...
I can try to find an example.
It's a guess that we're thinking that Nahalum does this.
They may have had... They may have one in their community.
I'll walk around and see what I can find. Any other questions on the cottage clusters?
So I may have slightly missed it, but did it say... I mean, is this all restricted to our zones? Our R1, 2, and 3?
That would be good.
Now that I looked a little closer, I don't know that it specified a zone.
Just based on the parent lot size and...
Yeah.
So I think the... Which is certainly open for discussion if that... If you think this is only appropriate in certain zones.
I don't.
Personally, I think it's something that can work well in just about any zone.
It's a transition thing, but...
Yeah.
And it did say something, I think, about creative infill.
One thing that occurs to me is that you could have something like this that is kind of senior housing that is then surrounded by single-family homes.
Yeah.
So that, you know, grandma can have her own place in the cottage cluster.
Or our snowbird community that goes south for the winter and they're just need a low-maintenance place to live here during the summer.
That too.
Yeah, this... Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just really obsessed with this concept. I think it just can work in so many different environments.
Yep.
Should we... I just wonder if maybe for clarity, we should specify that it can be in any residential zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Well, it is under the provisions of a planned development and a planned development spells out which zones.
That's true. Well, yeah, it's processed per planned development requirement. I do think, though, that in the interest of clarity, it may be good.
I agree.
I think anything we can do to make it more cut and dry on the other end.
Well, I'm glad you're excited about something in this, your book, because...
Yeah, because I mean, I'd tell you, I have initial drawings for the property next door done as a cottage cluster.
Oh, yeah?
And I missed out on the...
Our place down in Arizona, they do have a section in our planned development that has cottage. Cottage section. What do we call it? The ranch.
These are really popular to kind of mid-40s. And there's actually, I think, four or five of them that I know of in Lebanon that are on a smaller scale, but as far as your initial cluster opening onto a green space or a common space.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, okay. Shall we move on then? All right.
Next one looks a little bit bigger.
All right.
Well, on a positive note, I don't think we have any manufactured, ma- manufactured dwelling parks that actually are this good at this time.
No, and I do like.
Definitely ups the, it raises the bar on manufacturing.
Yeah, and I do like K-two, where it shows the actual verbiage behind the fencing. Maybe we could pull some of that. Yeah, and I don't know if that chapter is specific to.
Some of these parks are grandfathered in? Have some improvements to, like, you know, like the fencing part?
Well, they, I mean, certainly they can improve, but we can force them to be, to, is the question. Once they're built and in place, unless they are going beyond a certain percentage of the property to, to redevelop it, then they are allowed in their current configuration. Now, certainly, we can do code enforcement when it comes to garbage and things that are stored out in the open and, and things like that, but we don't have much in the way of teeth to force them to do any of the fencing or landscaping and stuff like that. I, I'd like to.
There's nothing that you can change on the books for code? Especially for fencing park?
Well, you can't unless you want it, unless the city wants.
Yeah, that's the thing, is it, it would basically, you're putting a mandate on a, on a, on them to, for money they have to shell out. Whether we can legally do it or not, I, I don't, we'd have to look into that. But at this time, we don't have any rules that force them to.
Here's a question, too, for clarification. Uh, under the first section, scope, C, density. Maximum density of parks should not exceed eight units per gross acre. And I know that's often interpreted it as if they had ten acres, they could put eighty units on it, but those eighty units aren't associated with eight units per acre. They can all be shoved into one corner. But they're just, that's how it's figured.
Uh, yeah, for gross acres, so you take the gross amount of land, and so it, it's gonna include your parking areas.
And your green space. Yeah, it's like the general footprint of the actual lot. But there's not a number of units per actual acre that you could, like a maximum. I know some parks, and I don't think they do it as often as they used to, but some of them, they'll just shoehorn them in there.
So I guess. I guess it depends on how you wanna word it. You could, you could, you could have eight per, you could have a certain number of units per acre, not including parking and driveways, uh, and that makes it a little bit better. If you're worried about them shoehorning, you know, cramming everything over into one area and then having a big open space. You know, you can have requirements on how close to bill, how close they can all be to each other.
Yeah, so I'm not against having the green space as much as I am them just counting the five acres of wetland in order to increase it by forty houses. It seems like there should be a maximum number of allowable dwellings per physical acre. And I don't know.
Developable acre?
Per developable acre, yeah. Whether that is based on setbacks, or that's kind of how we get around it, is assigning certain setbacks. I just don't know, cuz I've.
Not sure how.
I know there's a need for things like this, I, I, I don't know, I just have a hard time swallowing most of them, cuz most of them are poorly run.
Yeah, um, I agree. I, I, I have heard that, that investors are looking more at manufactured home parks recently. Especially big, big corporate investors, because they, they make a lot of money.
Yeah, they're instantaneity.
From what I've heard nationwide, there's a lot of manufactured home parks that have been changing hands, and, and it hasn't been all bad when it comes to the city side of things, because it has resulted in parks that, that look nicer and are, are better run. Usually, it's, it's worse for the residents, because they end up paying more.
Yeah, they up their rent. My mom's just changed hands, and they just about doubled their rent.
I actually heard, on a side note, I heard about a, a case in Massachusetts, they have a law on the books, uh, the state, where if a manufactured home park goes up for sale, they have to give the residents right of first refusal. For the residents to form a co-op to buy it.
Yeah, they tried that at hers, and that, they didn't have, unfortunately enough, interest. Everybody's too old to care anymore.
Yeah, it, it, but in this one case that I heard about, they, they actually did it, and it, and it worked out well. Yeah, if that, that's an aside. I, I re, I'm not sure that that's, that it's feasible to do for a developable acre.
But it would just have to be done through setbacks.
I would, I would recommend you, how, how close are you willing to have manufactured homes next to each other?
Hundred feet.
And if you wanna do that, we can, we can try.
I do like that it has, um, an age associated with each unit at the time.
I thought that was something that was not allowed, but.
I know you can, I know that insurance will do that for uninsurable units. And I know the county has something as far as what they'll allow as a primary dwelling. But I like that it's in there.
So, and now that I'm looking at it, oh, uh, right now, it's, it only has a setback for the perimeter.
Yeah, for the perimeter of the park itself, but not for each unit within the park.
Yeah, so that, that's something we should look at probably adding is a, is. Distance between units.
So like unit setbacks, right below perimeter setbacks, or?
So, um. What, what, what are you thinking distance-wise?
I mean, I, I know that they're typically smaller than a typical subdivision. But there's some verbiage in the cottage cluster that's not terrible as far as its setbacks, and density-wise, they're kind of similar, while the cottage cluster is a little more spacious. It's just that usually they end up doing the units, and then they throw the carport on, and the carport isn't involved in the setback.
I've seen some in Arizona where it's got, you got a single wide, and it's got its carport, and then you got the next single wide.
And they're just about touching.
They're basic, yeah. And so that's like the.
Your separation is the carports.
Yeah, which isn't attached to the house, so it doesn't count.
That's what, fifteen feet, maybe? Um, so I, I guess you may wanna specify more than that.
Yeah, but even in an R-one zone where you have a freestanding home, that, the setback between the lateral sides of the houses is only like five feet from the house to the property line.
So you could have as, as little as ten feet between homes.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that, you know, that's not very much, as we would think. I would think we'd want at least that much between manufactured homes.
I guess the, the main issue is that because of the configuration of most single wides, thinking of the, the worst possible scenario. Only ten feet for those is pretty extreme, whereas for single-family neighborhood, it doesn't quite, uh, doesn't quite get to that level of density.
Like the tamarack, I don't know if they all even have detached or detached carports. And is that something we wanna require with these, instead of just backing in homes with a driveway? Do we wanna include, they must include. Covered parking, a carport, or a carport in between the two homes at least? Whether they be adjoining or carport, carport home.
I think we've made that a requirement on some of the properties that we reviewed over in like the Willow, Eighteenth and Willow area.
They should have a covered parking space. Maybe even a storage shed with it. They've got some nice mobile home parks over in Albany that have that, where they have the home, then they have the carport, double carport, and the yards behind that go, that split and go with each home. But the carports, double carports, what separates them, and they each have their own little storage shed shop to put their personal stuff in, and it works really well. They're nice parks.
The only thing I, I hate to see trailers come so close together, because if one caught fire. It's gonna flame the other one, because it's so close, um, you know, it should be some type of a setback, rather than. Touching, you know, I could go arm to arm and touch the next one, you know.
So what, what, I guess getting back to it, though, what, what distance?
It's hard, I mean, as much as I wanna discourage it, even that with setbacks, mobile home park versus residential standard, I mean, there's still similar setbacks to them, but for me, the problem is flammability.
Heat, you know, it will.
Typically, they're built of a lesser quality material that contains fire. They're more likely to spread. The newer ones, I guess, and the age thing comes in there, they are built better with better requirements. But mobile homes aren't built to building code, they have their own building code. Is more lenient than IBC and, and regular, regular residential building code. So I guess that's why I like to see them farther apart, because I know that they're not built, even though they say they are, they're not built the same.
Well, are there any requirements from the fire department related to any of this?
That's a good question.
I can look into that, um.
And I know the other thing, too, that's kind of a little bit in the gray area, is that this whole section is called manufactured dwelling park. When we have two things in there, we have modular homes, and then we have mobile homes or manufactured homes. But a modular home would have to fit into this, which a modular home is built to building code.
But also, I see, in, in, I see in Sweet Home, some of your trailer parks, they're not just modular homes. They're driving RVs on the spot in between. So they're considering that their home, they're living in it, so. The gas.
Well, those should be in a, in an RV park, not a mobile home park.
Well, drive around a bunch of them, you'll see a lot of RVs that they're using as homes.
And that's the point where, as we're understaffed, but.
If you, if, let me know where, where specifically, like, as you're driving around, if you see, you know. Maybe cross streets or whatever, cuz that's, that's.
Mobile home park right there by, um, by Mark, um, what's it called? It's across from the, the aisle of the auction guide.
Oh, oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about. It's very quick, you don't see it. You know where the marijuana place is moving to? Space, and then there's that park, and then there's the heating place.
Lot of RVs in there that people are living out of.
Then it's right, yeah, Walker Heating is right next to it.
I would consider that dangerous, because if those RVs, you know, they got gas, if it happened to blow up, the unit next door is gonna burn up just as well.
RV park? Is it an RV park?
It's not an RV park, it's, it's a trailer park, but, but, but they got RVs that people are living out of it. Well, that shouldn't be allowed.
Two comments, and it may not be anything we could do anything about, but open carports are really a public display of junk.
No, yeah, no, you're right.
That's why we should give them that storage space with.
You know, you can go over on Mountain View and, and, uh, Ames Creek, the area right there, you know, they get a carport, and it's just a pile of all their belongings on the outside, number one. Number two, this is really being picky, but when it talks about landscaping, I have never planted ivy, but I didn't regret it.
Could become a nuisance.
It grows up trees, it kills them.
It's not a good idea.
It covered my house, I was ten years getting rid of.
We should cross out ivy, cuz we, we.
We don't want it.
It's like saying, oh, and, you know, top of your burn, put, please put a row of Scotch broom.
Or please use blackberries for.
Norwegian blackberries. Or Himalayan.
Okay, um, this gives us some good feedback to get back to, uh, I'm, based on the conversation, I guess, if we do have unit setbacks, we do need to include a, an actual number, and I. I'm thinking somewhere around fifteen to twenty.
And, but the problem is, I guess, like, it's different, though, than it's not, it's not a residential home on an individual lot. These are buildings inside of a single lot. So they're, they don't necessarily have to meet the same setback.
If we require covered parking, that would.
Automatically.
Yeah, and not include a setback from that.
When it comes to fire protection, my concern is if you have, if you have covered parking in between each unit, and they cram them in as close as they can, adding that carport and not having that apply to the setbacks basically just gives a, a bridge from one unit to the next for, for fire to travel.
I know, and that's the thing, is cuz typically the carport doesn't count in a lot of setbacks.
Right, and, and it's not like it has a fire, the carport's not gonna have a fire rating to, it's gonna, you know, keep it from.
Kind of a na- the nature of a mobile home park.
And also on the mobile home parks, do you require, if they pull out a mobile home or manufacturer home, do you require them to put one back as a manufacturer home, because what, like the one park that I'm talking about, they moved some out, and they allow people to drive your, and, and they're living right out of the, the RV.
That shouldn't be, that shouldn't be allowed.
Should be a code enforcement.
That, that's a code, that's something, yeah, and I can get even on that one, taking a look at that. So whenever you see stuff like that, certainly let me know, or.
When these mobile homes, you know, they're not like a regular house that will, you can live in it for a hundred years. These things break down after ten, maybe twenty years, um, they should be required that if they move one out, because it's getting old and just falling apart, that the only thing that they can replace it with is what was originally there.
So that's where the ten-year.
This, this rule, that ten-year rule on, on, in this code will actually help the existing parks. Somebody removes one, they're gonna have to comply with the new rule.
Yeah, if they remove one from the nineties, they can't put one back from the nineties.
Cuz we've had some fair, we've had some mobile home parks not long ago, they've, they've moved new units in that are quite old. And our code, there's not anything we can do to stop them, because our, the way our code is written right now.
Do they have to get a placement permit when they do that, like down on Tamarack?
Have to follow some basic rules, but essentially it's putting it back where the, the old one was. Uh, there's not any rule on governing.
I think, I think the last one's kind of played like kind. So they were saying, you know, tic tac tac, pulling out a seventy-eight, putting in a seventy-eight.
But what I, what, what I know too is some of these landowners that have those trailer parks, they're cheap. Okay? And I'm, I'm not meaning to be mean and say that, but, but they'll go out and buy used mo- so if, if you've got a ten year thing, then save like nineteen ninety. Well, they'll buy one that's nineteen ninety-one or whatever. So if, and if it's year two thousand, well, it's still under the ten year thing, so they can move this one in. It's going to fall apart in the next couple of years since it's already nine years old or so.
And, and, and that's a good point. Uh, back on, on code enforcement, you know, when it comes to those RVs, that's, that's not allowed, even if it's in a, a mobile home park. If it's in an RV park, then certainly of course it's allowed. Um, and then the, the junk in the carports, that's a code violation. It's still open storage. It's not obscured. And so please, um, please notify us when you see that because that's something that we can do something about. The way our code compliance is working is that we, we do, we are very much complaint based. He does do his own patrols and, and do his own violations, but he's not able to do as much of that. When, if you really want something to get done, uh, get a complaint in because that, that gets it to the top of the file fast.
Should we require an onsite park manager?
Uh.
Can we do that?
We can look at, we can look into that, like a caretaker.
Well, most of the parks have at least a maintenance person on the park.
I was going to say, we talked about the carports, maybe we're talking about individual ones. But in a lot of these situations, they may have a multiple carport with storage that is managed by the manager, which should give you a little control over it.
Yeah, because it's common space.
See that with a lot of apartment buildings where there be.
And the park isn't responsible for those. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that changes the responsibility.
Specify onsite manager required?
Um, Edgefield over in Edgewood in Albany.
Park that I'm talking about.
Their, their carport structures are, they aren't responsible if they get damaged
When I was running for a council.
Or roof need replaced, the owner
They belong to the park.
Owner is responsible, owner, the park is responsible if roof leaks or there's dry rot, then, oh.
Sorry, sorry, just for the sake of making sure that we only have one conversation at a time.
All your parks, at least when I was putting some signs out.
Yeah.
All your parks have driving RVs in your trailer park and they should not, they should not be allowed. So the code enforcement should check every trailer park that you have in the city and see that they're not zoned right.
We'll get on that. Um, but yeah, the, on the other issues, please let us know.
Yeah.
When you see stuff like that, maybe you can hear it. Um, but back to this, the code, do you, do you want to add something to require an onsite manager?
I, I think we would need to look at that based on size of the park.
True, yeah.
When it, when it exceeded a certain number of dwellings.
Well, if there's eight to an acre, I think they're more than
Yeah.
Eight or so, or the acre.
Well, or even a total number of ten houses or something.
Would be managing seven, like if
Yeah.
So, yeah, the minimum area is going to be one acre.
Yeah.
So they could have eight units on that one acre.
I know.
So, I mean, if we, if we take the number like ten or fifteen.
Yeah.
The ten or more?
Ten or more.
Yeah. Yeah, in a park where ten or more dwellings exist, implementation of a caretaker's cottage or caretaker facility.
Per park, right? Because, you know, some of these landlord, you have several parks in the same city.
Like the caretaker unit and only have one or cottage?
And, and oftentimes it's just one of the residents that lives in there that's appointed, you know, to collect the rent.
True.
If someone has a, a complaint about the neighbors doing this, then report it to the site manager and the, who lives at the park and is a resident and they can let the owner know.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I, uh, sorry, go ahead Blair.
No, that's, this is, this is what
I, I was just saying that maybe we should do this one next section, which is somewhat related to the one we just did. And then after that, I think we pretty well change gears, so it might be a good spot to
I, I was actually going to suggest skipping this next session because we, we went ahead and adopted this or a version of this.
Oh, recently?
Recently.
Yeah.
We decided to move ahead because we were, we had heard of, of a bunch of older manufactured homes that have been purchased for, to be placed on lots and we wanted to kind of get ahead of the game and
Good.
And we don't have
So this has been reviewed recently.
And we don't have though, a date associated with placement of manufactured homes, do we?
Um, no, it pegs it at, um, the current building code.
Which is
Exterior thermal envelope must meet the standards specified by state law for single family dwellings as defined in ORS four five five point zero one zero.
And that does have an actual manufactured date associated with it.
HUD cat or HUD cert?
That ORS. Um, I, I, to be honest, it's been a while since I read it, so I don't recall.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not ten years old. It's way older than ten years.
Yeah, it's, it's an actual date
Mm-hmm.
Associated with it. Anything built after or before that date is not allowable.
So do you want, do you want me to see if the, if we can legally do that?
A ten year
Yes, yes, yes.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, then it's, then it's kind of a self correcting thing as we go. Don't have, uh, adopting a new date in the future.
Because I think you'd also get some nice landlords then if they know that they have to keep it.
Yeah.
You know.
And not that I'm, I'm looking to discourage some of this, but I am looking to discourage some.
Well, we're looking to improve the quality of housing and
There you go.
I don't think there's anything wrong. Okay. Uh, so do you want to read through this one anyway, this next, since we, even though we looked at it recently?
I, I would just maybe see what you could find as far as allowable legal verbiage
Yeah.
to throw in the ten year or something similar. Maybe we can't go ten years, but maybe we can go fifteen?
Okay.
I, I don't know. So as tight as we can get without getting in trouble.
Okay. I'll see what I can do on that. So then that'll bring us up to seventeen point six eight home location.
One.
Which is relatively quick.
That's one. And then we go into accessory structures. Your call. I'm fine either way.
Well, let's at least do this one and then we can see where we are. All right. Any thoughts on that one?
Uh, no, but I think this will eliminate, eliminate a lot of things that have come before us in the past. Especially when it's the primary resident conducting business.
Yep, and setting appointments.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, the only other question I had was maybe on the daycare twelve.
Yeah.
To me, it sounds like a, a big number. I mean, I've watched a lot of kids in the past and uh, twelve seems like it would be
It could potentially be twelve parents dropping off their
Twelve cars right
Well, it says or facility with twelve or fewer children. So I don't know.
Twelve parents coming in the morning.
Yeah.
That's twelve cars.
Cars.
I guess the, the question is, under the way this is written, the only way that would need a conditional use permit is if there was somebody working there that doesn't live in the home.
Right, but
If you have them
Or if they don't have, or if they have thirteen kids.
Yeah, but she's talking too about, say they're all dropping off between eight and eight fifteen.
Yeah, it's a big impact.
Twelve cars. And twelve kids playing in a yard, I think, might be a little bit more of a inconvenience on the neighbor. I, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, it's me too. How about the, you know, it tells about twelve or fewer kids. Say if they had twelve kids, well, how big is the house have to be than that?
That is a number that shows up in the code in other places.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To me, that's a big impact that I, I believe the neighbors should have an opportunity to comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, for a daycare facility. I mean, if, I guess I would, I would be way more comfortable if my neighbor decided to watch kids and they were watching four or five.
Yeah.
But if I came home and my neighbors were watching twelve kids.
And they're right on the other side of my fence.
Right.
Running off.
And I'm trying to, yeah, enjoy my peaceful backyard.
I, I don't know. I mean, I know, you know, Ava was saying it pops up other places, that number. I just don't know where twelve came from.
So there, there is definitely for daycare facility, but it actually, um, it, it looks at three or more children, uh, being in the facility, brings it into the definition of daycare facility.
But it doesn't, it doesn't have a, a maximum in a residential area without conditional use permit.
Yeah, we would just have to look, um, we'd have to survey the rest of the code to find out where that is. But I know that's a standard number I've seen before.
So, yeah, we can look into it, but I, I don't think there's anything, if, if you, if you think a, a lower number, um, should trigger the conditional use.
Yeah, I mean
I think low should be lower.
I, I would just automatically, I'd just kind of think in the number ten, which I still think is high, but seems like a
Ten cars impacting your neighborhood?
Yeah, well, you don't want my neighborhood. There's three hundred, three hundred cars a day down my street.
In your, in their backyard and
Yeah.
throwing stuff over the fence.
I'll tell you when my neighbors
I wouldn't like it.
When my neighbors' kids are all there and they're friends, and there's six of them in that backyard.
Yeah, yes.
Nuts. And that's just six.
So what number would you like?
I like eight.
Eight's not bad. I mean, I, I don't know. I just
I know.
Kind of meets them in the middle.
Twelve to me seems a little high without being
The other thing, the other thing to consider is what are the state requirements for daycare personnel? Like how many personnel do you need per numbers of children?
How many adults per children if that aren't your own? Your own, yours now, but other people's children.
Right, right.
More cars there then too, if they need one adult per two or three children.
Then it becomes conditional use.
Yeah.
So this, I'm, I'm mainly concerned with the stuff that's going to be over the counter.
Yeah.
That, that we won't see.
Right. I agree.
So, I mean, if they want to do conditional use and then, then they have to do the application and then it has to come to the hearing, then your neighbors have a chance to comment.
Yeah.
But if this number is high without a conditional use that's when I, I think Ava's right, looking at the state and seeing what their requirements are for a daycare facility.
The thing is, is we don't, uh, I mean, we, we can look at that. I, i- in some ways though, it, it, it doesn't really matter because we don't have to, this is a home location, right? We don't, it, you know, we're, we're not saying, you know, you can't run one at all. We're just trying to find the threshold between whether it's outright permitted or whether it requires a conditional
Yeah, I just think, I just think having some information from the state is something, is a foothold, as a, you know, foundation to stand on, to defend ourselves. I mean, I'm not against daycares. I definitely, they are amazing and I think people that have
They're necessary.
There is, they're necessary, but they do have an impact on the neighborhood.
Yes, they do. Yeah.
Okay.
So
So I'll, I'll look into more and, and so I'm, I'm hearing though that we have an interest in going as low as eight, talking about.
Yeah, and that's especially associated with kids that are not dependents or legal.
Yeah.
Guard, you know, I don't know, legal wards of the person living on the property.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
So, uh, I think that, is that our stopping point, point for tonight?
Yes.
Ava was quick on that one. All right, so, uh, we'll go ahead and close our planning commission meeting for the night of October seventh at, uh, eight twenty-two.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ava.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
We'll stop our recording here.
Yeah, let me know when the recording is off.